We are going to start this evening with the pledge of allegiance led by none other than our Livonia Unified Girls Hockey Team. Make your way up if you wouldn't mind. Come on up.
This is what you guys wanted on a Monday night, right? All right. We'll take your lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So a lot of you might be wondering why we have basically a party going on at council, but we have great things to celebrate. And right now, we're going to start off with the special recognitions and tributes. So right now, we have our awesome state champ Livonia Pom Pom. And we also have our Livonia Unified Girls Hockey Program that has been doing wonderful things over the last seven years, especially, what, two runner-up state champs, basically. And if Liggett wouldn't have been there, I know you guys would be there, so don't worry about it. But we're going to start off right now. I'm going to hand it over to Councilwoman Bzinski to give a little history and an accommodation of the Livonia Pom Pom.
Yes. So as Council President noted, we have a cool house today. It's so exciting to see so many young faces. I heard about your great accomplishment of not just being state champions this year, but last year as well, so back-to-back champions, very hard to accomplish, a great success. And we wanted to take a moment to just recognize your hard work. You were super talented for anyone out there. If you look up Livonia Pom Pom on YouTube, you can see the videos from both this year and last year. They had amazing routine, more coordinated than I could ever imagine. So I have this award on behalf of council to present. And if you want to...
Would anybody want to speak just how you guys got there? I mean, it's no pressure, but if you don't want to, then that's fine. Then what we're... Hey, listen, we got back-to-back state champs. If someone wants to, feel free to come up to the podium.
Coach, go on, speech.
If not, you know what? Hang on. Listen, you guys, back-to-back state champs. All right, come on up. You only get 45 minutes.
So we are new to the team, so we didn't do state championships. I'm making my four daughters so embarrassed.
That's okay.
But we were not on the team last year, but I can speak to just the amount of hard work that these girls put in. I can't even imagine being one of them. They work super hard. They work to be friends, and they're just a really dedicated team. I think we have extremely dedicated parents. They work hard to fundraise, so when we come by your houses and we're asking for bottles, please support us. So, and they just, they're a real family and more than just a team, and I think that's how they accomplished this.
That's awesome. No, we wish you everything. I'm going to hand it over to council really quick. Would you like to say something? Yeah. Councilman Jim Jolly.
So I know several of these families, and I know the intensity and the time and the effort that goes into the routines, and I know it's not easy at all. I know there's a lot of, a lot of stress and a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication. So I want to thank you all for being here and congratulations on the state championship. And I was hoping that Dave Sadows would go up there and speak, but, or Kat. But, next year. Well, I'm sure you'll be back next year because you win the state championship most years. So congratulations, we're proud of you. Thank you.
Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. As a kid, I played for the Livonia Orioles football, so it was always cool to see the Pom Pom. And you guys were always doing good things back then, a couple of years ago when I was a little Oriole. So now, a couple of years later, I'm up here. So congratulations to all the parents. And I heard a rumor that apparently Jim Jolly was going to do a routine up here, a Pom routine. So make sure you get your cameras out, okay? Thank you.
Is that true? Anything else with council? So right now, let's, we're going to, let's take a picture, do the accommodation, and then spread it out. Girls, what you did is awesome, back-to-back. We expect three, four, or five, but no, we know how it is. Huge kudos. Congratulations on doing it. It's a big deal. So congratulations on behalf of your city council in the city of Livonia. Let's get some pictures, and you get a cool plaque to take home with you.
You can.
All right. All right. So our second recognition, so the Livonia Unified Girls Hockey High School Team, that is a combination of all three high schools in Livonia. I wear many different hats. Some days, I'm council president, some I'm also the director of girls hockey for Livonia Hockey. And so I coached the 10 U girls we're at states, and that's why my voice is as gone as it is right now from yelling. But every time, I know you guys have come out and supported our team, and the things you guys have done to grow that hockey. And girls hockey is, it's tough. I know that the Michigan, to be acknowledged as a high school sport, you have to get to 63, but what you guys have been doing has been trailblazing and revolutionary, especially coming, if I'm right, two-time state runners-up against some Catholic schools, which is a big deal. I remember being at the last game, and you guys did things, you know, incredible, because these guys are recruiting and doing all that. So seeing girls hockey grow is something that is very important to me, and I know it is for the rest of the city. And Coach Janine is probably the best for the job, should we say, because she's, she'll let you know what she's thinking. She's pushed the program to incredible, incredible spots, honestly. The things you've done are incredible for girls hockey, good for the city, and kudos to you and the entire team. And for that, we do have accommodation. So if you girls would want to come up here, and then Janine, if you want to say a couple things about your, how you got here. But we have definitely hashtagged girls, girls rule today for sure in our city, and we're very proud of everything. And what these girls do on the ice is awesome. Do you want to do the picture?
Do you want to talk or first take a picture?
You just talk for a quick minute just to say, hey, you know, like, you know, tell us your journey within what you want to say.
First, kudos to you guys for back-to-back state champions. That is awesome. We leave our stuff on the ice. We, that's where we perform, but kudos to you guys. So congratulations to you guys. Yes, so Livonia United just finished our seventh season. It is comprised of all three high schools, Stevenson, Churchill, and Franklin, as well as seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. I love it because not only are they teammates, they're also classmates. And it doesn't matter what high school they go to, is that they're all with five minutes within each other, so it's awesome that they can enjoy each other's company off the ice as well as on the ice. Yes, the team is back-to-back state finalist back in 2022 and 2023, so we're very proud of that, especially competing with, yes, as Brandon would say, some Catholic schools like Catholic Central. We have to compete with Liggett that has ability to recruit. Unfortunately, I can offer a Livonia Public School system education, and you need to live in the city of Livonia. I am a Livonia resident. I did have three daughters that actually went to Stevenson and graduated to Stevenson, so I am all about Livonia.
Go Chargers.
Actually started the team for my middle daughter here, Corinne, who won an opportunity to play high school hockey. So she was actually the first one to went to the school board and had the guts as a freshman to talk to them in person and say, can we have a girls' high school hockey team? So kudos to her for pushing me, making me not say no, and starting this team, and I love it because it's grown to this year of having seven freshmen and four sophomores. Awesome. So we are plentiful for years to come, and hopefully, Brandon, your 10 U girls...
They'll be there.
They'll be there. I want them.
We might have three teams this year, so we're moving on.
I would love to have three teams, but thank you for the recognition. I appreciate it.
Let's get a picture.
Awesome, yes.
So before, that is it for the special recognitions and tributes. So if you guys want to hang out for a fun council meeting, you're more than welcome.
You have to stay.
But we've moved the tributes and recognitions to the top to save you from that. So you're free to stay. If not, thank you so much. Congratulations again to all of you. We appreciate you.
I thought Tina killed you.
Lemon's the funniest and the coolest kid in Livonia.
Well, I didn't think it would be this empty after this. And Ted Davis is here, so that's perfect timing. Do you want it? We got to run out of frames. All right. Well, welcome to the 1,988th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Toy.
Here.
Councilmember Jolly.
Present.
Vice President Tashnek.
Here.
Councilmember Donavich.
Here.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
President McCullough.
Here. And we show seven. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the city council held on February 28th, 2024. Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion by Bzinski, support by Donavich. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnek.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the minutes are approved, seven to zero. We're going to move on to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for the audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Nope. Mr. King?
The floor is yours. Good evening. Steve King, 33950 Coventry. It was exciting having so many people here. I just want to mention something briefly. I don't know if the council or the city is involved with the court program where they give you an opportunity to do community service. I don't, I don't know if there's any overlap. I don't know if it's through DPW or whatever it is, but I think that's a program that just needs to be analyzed and revisited. I was, they were, walked by my house the other day, three guys with the bag, and I had, there's litter there, and three guys walked by, and after they left, I picked up the litter. So I think the program should really be more outcome-based. You see these guys walking along the main roads, and they're basically going out for a walk with a trash bag. I was walking the dog today, and I noticed in a particular neighborhood I was in, every single storm drain was completely plugged with branches, leaves, could not, and you could see the remains of the water from the last rain, and they were like 95% of them completely plugged. That's something they could do. Instead of just walking down a main road with a bag, they could actually, again, outcome-based, we're going to clean these storm drains. If you do 10, 20, you go home. Instead, they come and they're there six, seven hours, and they're, well, something that needs to be looked at. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Hello, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Sure. Christopher Martin, and I'm a resident of the great state of Michigan, the winter water wonderland. But just want to touch on what Steve said over there. Having been a graduate of the work program myself years ago, it's a punishment for running for city council, and that's how it works in this city. But one thing I do notice, and this has been going on for probably years, is that they will sit in their vehicles, and I realize that it's going to anger some of you what I have to say, but it's going to be truthful, just like Steve mentioned over there. And that is that it's not a very productive program. And they sit in their cars over there, which if I was on the work detail, I would have no problem doing it. Rather sit in my car over there in the parking lot than walk with a trash bag. Just common sense. But the people that get paid, the court individuals over there, they're the ones that are in charge. And I view them as a pretty lazy group, to be quite honest. They don't put in a full day, not even close to it. If they're moving around for four hours out of the eight that they get paid over there, but you guys go and you look, okay? Take a drive-by and look and see them sitting in their vehicles. And like I said, I don't necessarily have a problem with that because they're under the supervision of people that don't want to work, and there's the issue. They're sitting in the vans, they're sitting in those expensive $75, $70,000 trucks that citizens bought, and they're just sitting. But drive around, Saturday, Sunday, take a look. You'll see them. That hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. President.
Councilman Toy.
Mr. President, all due respect to the last two speakers, that program is run by the probation department of the court. We do not, to my knowledge, have any, I don't want to say jurisdiction, what's the word I'm looking for, over that program. That's run by the 16th District Court, and it was a model program in its time when Judge McCann and others did it. I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to enlighten you of where that comes from, so you may want to go over to the court and take your comments and things over there as well. Happy to hear them, just want you to get them to the proper authorities as well. Thank you.
I know I cannot speak twice, so I'll wait to have, I'm going to have to wait to comment on that.
So no, you did have 21 seconds left.
Oh.
There you go.
Really? Well...
We got the parliamentarian.
Okay, that'd be great. And it might be true what Laura says, but I will tell you this, after hearing that the court did not bring enough, in enough money to support itself, and was taking out $200,000 out of the general fund, I think we do have something to say about it as a taxpayer. So you might want to look into that, Laura.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other more further comms, audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council communication. Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is just going to be a little short shout-out here. In the back of the room there is David and Maureen Gordon. They're two people who I met over 10 years ago because Mr. Gordon got a parking ticket, and he came to fight it at the 16th District Court. I'm not sure why, but they would come back often enough and kind of watch the court proceedings, and we became friends over time because they would come out enough. And it's, it's the first time I've seen them in about 10 years, so they recently reached out via email and said that they were looking for some entertainment, and I think Mr. McCullough is probably providing that tonight. But I just want to make sure I say hello, and it's great to see you both again, and I hope you're still here after the meeting so we can catch up a little bit, but thank you.
Mr. Chair.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. On a sad note, those of you that maybe know some of the DePonyo family, Mary and Dave particularly, Mary passed last week, and her funeral will be on the 14th of this week. Very active family, particularly in the Knights of Columbus here in Livonia, extremely active. And I would just ask the president to call for a few moments of silence for Mary DePonyo and the family, the DePonyo family who resigned to Livonia and have all their life. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk about the Livonia Symphony Orchestra. I had the opportunity to go to the Shamrocks and Tea yesterday, and Councilmember Bzinski was with me there. We had a great time, as always, having high tea and finger sandwiches. So always a great event. They do have the 50th Anniversary Gala coming up, April 20th, and if you're interested, tickets can be obtained, livoniasymphony.org. Looks to be a great night of fun. There'll be dinner, there'll be, the orchestra will be playing. I tried to get out of the maestro what they would be playing last night, and he wouldn't, or like yesterday, and he would not spill the tea, so to speak. So, but it was always a great time. So just I would, we are very fortunate in a city our size to have our own symphony orchestra. So it's, it's a rarity, and we should really celebrate that. Secondly, I actually had the opportunity today, March is reading month, so I was invited over to the American Montessori kindergarten today. And so after, after work where I was working with 17-year-olds, I got to go hang out with a bunch of five-year-olds, and we read Artie the Smarty, and we all learned how to make the different fish laugh noises, and they entertained me. They had a lot of questions about what council did. They wanted to know if I could make the rules, and they wanted the rules that they could have ice cream at lunch every day. I said I would make a motion, so, no, I'm just kidding.
Totally fair, though.
Exactly. But I just wanted to give them a shout-out. Nothing brightens your day than 18 five-year-olds climbing on your lap while you're reading books and having a good time. So thank you to them, and I look forward to going back.
That's awesome. Great work. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Councilman President. I will support your motion for ice cream at lunch. If you haven't heard, the city has an app, the City of Livonia app. So if you have an iPhone or a, one of those Androids, I don't know what those are, you can download the City of Livonia app, and you can report all sorts of things. You can report potholes, you can report trash pickup, you can report a complaint against Brandon McCullough if you're driving by next to him. There's a whole host of things you can do. So download the City of Livonia app, and it's a great resource for issues going on in your community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can we report dumpster enclosures, Ms.?
Depending on the petition, yes, we can.
Councilwoman Bzinski.
Just a couple of quick things. One, a student from Churchill High School, Hayden Han, had reached out to share about their program that they founded, the Share Kindness Project, with a mission to create a kinder world with the hopes that if he does it, then others will do the same. He's working to collect school supplies that will be handed out during the summer before the next school year. If you'd like to learn more or contribute, you can visit tskp.me/wishlist. I think it's great that our young people are trying to make a difference in the world and have a positive impact, so if you're able to check it out and support, I think that's a great opportunity. I also wanted to share that my next coffee hour is this coming Saturday, March 16th, at the library, the Civic Center Library in the Michigan Room at 11 o'clock. We will be discussing transit. So Jacob Uhasi from the Planning Department will speak on Livonia Community Transit and Bike Walk Livonia. You can come and ask questions about what's going on with council. I'll give a brief update. My next one will be on Saturday, April 13th. We'll be talking recycling and how you can best and most effectively recycle in our community. So, thank you.
Awesome. Lot of stuff going on.
Yes.
It's true. Yes. Just one last thing. I want to thank Kiri and I want to thank Martha both for attending the human trafficking and our mayor and her husband who stayed the entire time. And we went overboard on the movie, went a little bit longer than I expected, but that's okay. I think people that were there really got their eyes open, and I'm still getting product that we can give out on the streets, on the street reaches. They're dropping it off at my house, on my porch. I'm getting tons of calls that they couldn't make it, but they're there. So thank you, Livonia. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, and all of you as well for spreading the word. Really appreciate it, and it was an enlightening experience for a lot of people. Thank you.
Anything else from council? The only thing I want to touch base on, I kind of mentioned, but I spent the last, this past weekend in Grand Rapids for the 10-and-under girls' state playoffs for hockey. And I got to give the, a shout-out because I know all the girls are probably watching city council right now. But we ended up tying Trenton, which is always a powerhouse in hockey. These, this team beat us 17 to nothing over two games and then earlier in the season. And we tied them and took them out of the playoffs. We averaged about eight and a half, so I'm so proud of the girls. We lost in the quarterfinals to a very talented gross-point team, but they did wonderful. So if they are watching, which they probably are not, I'm going to give a shout-out to the Livonia Knights. So, cool. Nothing else from council? I'm going to hand it over to our mayor, and she has some introductions.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the moment tonight. Boy, you have really covered a lot of ground in just the beginning portion of this meeting. You're all very, very active, and that's commendable. I come here tonight, first of all, to thank you for the work that you did at your last council meeting, putting the money back into the budget for our Government Affairs Director and that position. We took you at your word and went on and hired for the position immediately. So tonight, I want to introduce you to Rob Druzwicky. Rob is the new Director of Government Affairs and will be that outreach person that we talked so much about needing in this community. So Rob comes with a really strong background as a lifelong Livonian and lifelong resident. His family's been a proud, proud members of this community for a very long time. Rob is very active with a number of organizations, and many people don't need an introduction to him. They just know him because of the work he's done either with the Livonia Public Schools Foundation or with the St. Baldur's Foundation, a number of our nonprofits in the community. So we're really looking forward to the energy and the enthusiasm and the engagement, quite frankly, that he's going to be able to bring to this position alongside of all of that outreach effort and working to make sure that people are well-connected with the services that are rendered by the city of Livonia. Part of his responsibility is also going to be to apply for grants, and we all know how significant that is. Rob started, I think, toward the middle of last week, and today submitted a request for $2 million to the federal government in a grant program already. So his arrival was really, really perfect. We came up against a really tight window. We learned just yesterday, as a matter of fact, that that grant was due today. They had not promoted the opening of the window adequately, and Rob was calling to find out when that window was going to be opened, only to learn that it was on its way to being closed. So hopped right on it and submitted a phenomenal grant for $2 million to help us to continue to advance the progress that we're making on the rec center. So we'll work to continue to lobby for that effort, because as you all know, it's not just a matter of submitting the paperwork, it's a matter of making sure that legislators understand the significance of the requests that we have. So we'll all be working together and working alongside of you to hopefully assure that at least a portion of that funding comes our way to finish out what we need for our rec center. rec center. So, thank you. Your timing could not have been better. Had we not had that vote and with you and been able to work with you last week, we would have found ourselves not able to take advantage of that opportunity. We simply would not have known that it existed. So, just wanted to let you know that your work is already paying off for us. So, thank you very much and you will see Rob regularly at your meetings. He'll be attending all of them. The goal is, is that if you do have any questions for the administration and you're not, you don't have a department head here who happens to be directly involved with that issue, Rob can bring the information back and make sure to get you the answers to the questions that you want. Hopefully, once again, working hard to expedite government. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mayor, for that introduction. Appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to be here. Jokes aside, because we share the same name, Rob, although mine is spelled with one B as opposed to his. But welcome, sir, and looking forward to working with you and with other department heads in the city of Livonia and our program supervisor with the council office and hoping that we can get that grant, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
No.
Nope.
Go ahead.
For the honors?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah. Did you need to go? Oh, no, I just wanted to say congratulations, Rob, and thank you for the $2 million almost.
Ms. Martin, we can have you speak at the beginning of the next meeting, if that's okay?
Well, I was hoping I could just ask Rob to get up and it's always nice to put, associate a name with a, with a face and say a few words because I, I think it's important. When I hate, when I see people being appointed to different things and they don't get up and talk.
No, I totally, I appreciate that.
All right.
I'm not going to put him on the spot. If he doesn't want to, he doesn't have to, but we're all happy that he's here. So, we are moving on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do have an administrative response to CR 04-24. This comes to us from the office of the mayor. This is a subject matter of human trafficking and drug use at various hotels and bars on Plymouth Road and how the city plans to address the issue. Do we have anyone from administration to speak on behalf of this? If not, I know we do have a packet in our agenda, in our civic clerk. Council, would we want to speak to that report? Seeing none.
Thank you. I think we were hoping to look at, maybe looking at, at that subject matter and putting it into public safety. I think Mr. Morgan chairs that committee, if I'm not mistaken, and is very capable of that. He shared with me some of his experiences last meeting on that very subject matter and it was quite impressive. So, I think he understands the circumstances and the issue and we can only, you know, look at it and improve upon it. And I thank the mayor and others for looking at the issue as well. Thank you.
Do we have that in committee already or no?
I don't think so, but I could be.
Would you like to throw it into committee?
Yeah, that would be fine. We can put it in there. We can review it.
You want to be the motion maker to put it into the Public Safety Committee for further discuss, further study?
We could do that, yes.
Do we have support?
We can make a motion then to put that into.
There we go. Any discussion from council to put this subject matter?
If it's not already there.
The human trafficking and drug use. Keep it broad, that way you can study the rest of it.
Yeah, that's cool. Yeah, fine.
Anything else from council? Audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote to put this item into the Public Safety Committee?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the item has passed seven to zero. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 12 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on January 29th and determined to be non-controversial. Actually, that's not the right date. That would have been from February 28th and non-controversial. Council, do I have a motion?
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from Morgan. Any audience communication regarding the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yeah, I think it's on the consent agenda. It was on the agenda last meeting. And is it the purchase of the police cruisers? Is that on there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I was just curious, when something's on the consent agenda, is that the starting line or the finish line when it comes to purchasing? So, if it's on the consent agenda, that means these vehicles have been purchased already? No.
I'll address that. So, basically, this is getting the approval to then to make the purchase order.
All right. So, then you're going to go into meetings and discuss and look at stuff? Okay, that's good. I'm hoping you will at least consider, I hope you'll consider looking at some kind of alternative vehicle. I know Ford makes a cruiser. They have a, they have a hybrid cruiser that I know some of the local communities are embracing. They also have an all-electric cruiser, so I'm hoping it's something you'll just, you know, have a discussion about.
Yeah. So, Mr. King, I could give you a little bit more clarification. This particular one is on the My Deals Cooperative Purchasing Agreement through the state of Michigan?
So, they are purchased?
No. So, right now, they're getting the approval to purchase them through the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Oh, okay.
So, if approved tonight, then this would, I would assume that the administration would create a purchase order through the financial mechanisms and then follow through with the purchase.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for the consent from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is approved seven to zero. We will now move on to unfinished business, starting with item number 13, which is a roll call, though. Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law, Title II, Chapter 4 of the City Council, adding Section 075, which is the council office administrator and amending Section 80, which is the city clerk duties. A first read was given by Councilmember Laura Toy on February 12th. Do I have a second read?
Mr. Chair, you do have second reading. I would like to make a comment, if I may.
Support.
Thank you very much for the support.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. In our attorney notes, it does state that it will go into effect upon publication in the Livonia Observer.
Detroit Legal News.
Excuse me, Livonia Observer. But anyhow, what, my concern is this, and maybe it would be best directed to the clerk because they obviously do the hard work it takes to get all this in line. We, we would like to see that transpire pretty quickly, Madam Clerk, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair. Do, you know, I apologize, but in past governmental places that I've been, we give it an immediate effect, which means within 24 hours, if the mayor or the governor says no veto or whatever, then it goes through. Do you, do you know how quickly this goes through so that we can keep this clean and?
Absolutely. First, you need the non-veto letter from the mayor. Once our office receives that, we can then send it to Detroit Legal News for publication. The deadline is 11 a.m. It would go in the next day's.
Next day? Okay. And then it just doesn't take that long then, right? Okay. Depending, obviously, the mayor. Yeah, okay.
Mr. President.
That's helpful. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Councilman Donovan?
I'd like to ask for that non-veto letter from the administration, please.
Mr. Donovan's asking for the non-veto letter.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the motion passes seven to zero. We will move on to item number 14, which is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission. It's petition 2023-12-2-15, submitted by Archtech Architects LLC on behalf of New Oakland Family Centers, requesting a special waiver use for a plan development to convert two former office buildings for use as a behavioral health facility for short-term temporary housing on the property at 29582 and 29596 Five Mile Road. We do show new information, new data on this item. Council, do I have a mo, do I have direction?
King?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll offer a denying motion at this time.
We have a denying?
Support.
Give support to Morgan?
Go right ahead.
Discussion is open. Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, so this is a complicated issue in regards to how it is playing out for our community because New Oakland is well-regarded and well-respected, I think, by everybody up here on the council and everybody at large in the community as well. And they do important work. But we had an opportunity to review the plans that they have put before the council and it's not the appropriate place, in my judgment, to operate such a facility in regards to the services that they're providing at their location. It's not to say that the services are not needed or not warranted, but this would basically be granting a new utilization of property that was not foreseen at the time that the nearby residents has purchased their homes. Particularly, there's a home that's in very close proximity to the facility that would be used to house children who were at risk and needing particular services that, quite frankly, I wouldn't feel comfortable with my family being, not close to that happening, but I wouldn't feel comfortable if I had purchased my home with a certain understanding of what I was signing up for and then the changing utilization of the property next door. So, I want to extend my sincere appreciation and gratitude for the services provided by New Oakland. I want to wish you well and I want to continue to forge a partnership in regards to the services you provide at the city. And I want to let you know that you're, you're always welcome to do business here, but we got to find something that's a little bit, bit more cohesive to the surrounding environment. So, with that, I'll, I'll open the, well, I'll leave the balance of what to be said to my colleagues. Thank you.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of want to mirror a little bit of what Mr. Jolly had to say and I do also want to thank the petitioners for doing the much-needed work that they do. Our country is in a mental health crisis right now and I've seen that and it's hit our teen population especially hard. But that being said, I do have some major, major reservations on the location here. During the public hearing, we asked about security. We asked about the 24/7 operation and even though intake wouldn't be 24/7, they would still be running 24/7. And the close proximity to the neighborhood is really what has, you know, made me concur with the Planning Commission's recommendations. So, I would really encourage the petitioner maybe to find a better location that could accommodate a better fit for this facility. It's definitely needed and important work and I would encourage you, please, to just work with us on that. This is just not the location, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Mr. Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. I too concur with my colleagues. There's a great history at this FEMI's business and they provided us some really great information, but there was a number of concerns based around public safety concerns. Our police department sent us information to back that data up and then the Planning Commission as well explained some reasoning rationale as to why this wouldn't be a good fit, repurposing an office building to now a residential structure. So, I wish them well. I hope that they're able to find maybe a better-suited commercial-type building, not in such close proximity to residential homes and thank them for the work in our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anything else from council? I'm going to go to the petitioner. You're right there. If you, come on up.
Hi, thanks very much. My name's Craig Cindy. My address is 26545 American Drive, Southfield, Michigan. And the first thing I want to say is thank you to the council for a really thoughtful discussion that raised some thinking in our minds, which I think is the purpose of meetings where the direction of communities is decided. I want to talk a little bit about our journey together, not just around this facility, but, you know, New Oakland has been in Livonia for almost 25 years now. And I want to talk a little bit about how the discussion of this issue has evolved. When we first met with the Planning Commission in January, there was a lot of discussion and language related to safety, related to the idea that this would be a facility to house dangerous kids, that those kids, that it would be scary or unsettling for these kids to be in proximity to neighborhoods, that somehow the facility itself would be a kind of involuntary or inhumane place. And those initial objections were kind of rooted in a lot of fear and doubt and partly because of our collective discussion over the last couple of meetings, I think we've dispelled a lot of that. And so, I want to thank you for listening. What we're, what we're kind of down to now, if I am reading the room right, are technical issues related to setbacks, barriers, noise abatement, doors and windows, fire safety, maybe alarms going off in the middle of the night, something like that. These are all the kinds of things that, that can be solved with new thinking and new planning. We obviously disagree still with some of the objections that have been raised about those technical issues and we think they can be solved, but I'm really not here to talk about what we disagree about. I really want to talk, and I think you all have already, Mr. Jolly and Ms. Tashik and Mr. Donovan, you've all essentially said what I intend to say, which is there's a lot that we really agree on. And what we really agree on is the importance of youth mental health. I think the importance of Livonia stepping up to be a leader. If we can find the right solution, I think in the last meeting, there was a huge amount of energy and this was really an idea, I think, suggested by Mr. Jolly or framed by Mr. Jolly, related to a kind of campus environment at the Five Mile Facility that, you know, is something that has caused us to think differently and better, in better ways about that facility. And we have a lot of energy for that idea as well. And I think most importantly, the idea that kids with mental health diagnoses are not scary kids or bad kids, they're just kids. They're, they're really just like your kids and my kids. And, and that is, I think, an important realization for the community as a whole as we work to move forward. We don't have the votes to win this appeal. And even if we did, we, even if we did win this appeal, we don't want this facility to divide the community or to divide the council. We really want it to unite the community and the council around the things that we all agree on. And we have thoughts about how sort of working with the campus idea that was raised in the last meeting and other plans for, you know, organizing the way in which we deliver service, services in Livonia, we can bring that to life. So, you know, in the spirit of really continuing our journey together, one that started almost 25 years ago, one that our dad and my brother and I are here, that our dad would be so 25 years ago, one that our dad, my brother and I are here, that our dad would be so proud of, we're going to ask to withdraw this appeal. And so I don't know in what parliamentary gyration...
We're going to find out.
Okay. But we are going to withdraw our appeal tonight, but we're also, I hope, going to count on the goodwill and the engagement of the planning commission and the council to, you know, to really think about and work with us as partners to come up with the right solution in the future. Because I think, for all the reasons that you've shared and articulated, there really is both a need and also energy for, for doing this in Livonia. And, you know, we, we love Livonia. I mean, we really do. My dad, it wasn't the first place we came, but it was the second. It's the only community where we have two locations, and we can't think of a better community to sort of introduce this, this new idea in youth mental health, which is so important. So, thank you for listening. That's all I have to say.
Yes, you may.
Well, sir, I, I want to commend you, and, I mean, it speaks to your organization with, I mean, quite frankly, your words just now were one of the classiest things that's ever been spoken by a petitioner who's looking at losing an item before us. And, I mean, that goes a long ways, honestly. At this time, being the maker of the motion, denying this, with your indication that you wish to drop this item and not proceed any further, I'll withdraw the motion. And, you know, I, I look forward to, as a city and your organization, continuing to look at, you know, all items of service and kind of going forward. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm trying to understand the rationale here. My, my understanding up until this point is, and I thank you for everything you're saying, but in terms of precedent and procedure, my understanding is a motion, some action has to be taken tonight at a regular meeting, whether it be approving, denying, or a committee, some action has to be taken. So I guess my point is, is that if a petitioner asks for an item to be removed off the agenda beforehand, withdrawn, that's okay, but now it's our item. Now it's here, and we have to make a decision, like we've seen in the past, where, where we, we had a tie and we made no decision. We still have to do some sort of decision, so...
I'm going, as the council president, to move to Mr. Goldstein for clarification, if you have an answer.
Regrettably, I do not have a straight answer for you.
Mr. President? So I think the item before us at this time, as Mr. Donavich indicated, they could have removed it before the start of the meeting. There is no time parameters in regards to that taking place. It's, it's your, I, some law professor out there is going to be very proud of me for saying this, but Hofeldian rights indicate that you have the power to appeal and proceed with this, you also have the power to stop it. And that's where I would leave this be, because it's not indicative, it's not indicative of our ordinances or our charter that if they don't want to proceed, neither do we.
And so we have the motion withdrawn?
And I'm taking you at your word in regards to withdrawing my motion, that you're not going to further proceed down this path...
That is right. Well, on that, I was going to state the same Promethean rules that Councilman Jolly brought up, but I just didn't want to overstep him. With that being said, with the withdrawal, Mr. Morgan, are you good to withdraw the support of Mr. Jolly's original motion?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of the denial. I think it's already been put in our hands, and I think we should, that, that's a strategic move, I believe, on the petitioner's part.
So let's just do it. So, Mr. Jolly, you withdraw, withdrew your motion. If we have a new motion for denial...
Yeah, a motion for denial. It's already in our hands. Support.
Support from Donavich. This is for the denying. Mrs. Toy?
Thank you. I, I would, I would say to my colleagues, I don't know, we're getting information late. There's a whole bunch of stuff that Scott just showed me on this agenda item as well, some, some history of this that, quite frankly, is troubling to me. While I believe strongly in what's going on in this country and elsewhere on mental health and all those nice little things we all look at day in and day out, but there's also a, a bunch of information at the end of your packet here this evening. Those of you that were able to read it or not read it, I, I didn't, I didn't see it. So that's about the second or third thing we got in late. This council used to have a law, or a law, a rule, that said, I think it was 24 or 48 hours of submission by whoever, whenever, however. And I think we got to stick by that, because we all have busy schedules, and I know the president does a terrific job, don't get me wrong, and our office does too, but we got to start clamping down, because, no offense, I totally miss this. And, you know, not that I'm perfect, but I usually try and read what I can read, especially when it comes to technology, I'm so in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for Mr. Goldstein, this is a legal question on this. If we were to go ahead with the denial, that would not preclude the petitioner from coming back to planning with a new plan at some point, would it? Or would it?
It would not preclude a new plan being submitted.
Because that's what I believe the petitioner is saying that they want to do, is create a new plan.
That's correct. We will come to you with new plans that will not be this plan.
Proceed with the denial motion, regardless of how the vote goes, should it, should the denial be approved?
To be clear...
Then they could, yeah.
To be clear, you're, you're denying...
The current.
This plan.
Correct.
You're not prohibiting them from submitting other plans in the future. Those are two completely different things.
So since we have a denial potentially, well, we do have a denial on the floor right now, we could go ahead and vote and not have to worry about a future plan. Okay.
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. To Mr. Torreina, our planner, for this exact reason, we get a lot of different petitions up for developments and whatnot, and if a petitioner starts to see that the vote's not going their way, if all of a sudden, at the meeting, they're asking for the item to be removed, from my understanding to Mr. Torreina, there's certain time restraints and whatnot. After a petition is denied, they can't come back tomorrow with a petition, there are certain restrictions now that kind of go into place, is my understanding.
On a, on a new petition, there are no time restrictions.
No time restrictions.
You can apply tomorrow. Council has, can take no further action on this item based on the petitioner's request to withdraw, or you could proceed with the denial, but that would not, as you said, preclude him from applying tomorrow with a different project involving the same piece of property.
Just my opinion, as one council member, I don't like the precedent of a petitioner coming up, and no offense to them, again, I have nothing but good things to say about them, but procedurally speaking, as this body, when an item's sent to us and the petitioner realizes they're not going to get their vote, then they just ask for it to be removed real quick. That's just not a good procedure, and I've heard of the same scenario in other communities and past councils that have talked about this exact scenario. This is not new, and I think it behooves council to make sure we, when we get an item, we make a decision and we move forward. And that's just my opinion, as one member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Mr. Jolly?
So effectively, I, you know, whether we vote to deny or the petitioner withdraws the motion before us, effectively, it has the same exact outcome in regards to, we deny it, he can refile it tomorrow. He pulls it, he can file a new plan tomorrow. I've withdrawn my motion in regards to this based on the longstanding history that we have with this organization, and if they don't want a vote and they don't want to proceed, they're telling us they don't want to proceed with this. It has no effective difference whatsoever. If we go to a vote, I'm going to vote with my colleagues to deny it, because I don't think it's the best thing. I was trying to do, I was trying to be reciprocal to the classiness of the petitioner in, in terms of letting him walk away with the dignity of not having lost the plan before the council.
Well, and, I mean, to be perfectly candid, we, we don't want to force you to vote against this in ways that might be misinterpreted as a vote against youth mental health, which we know will not be, is not your intention.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to my colleagues one last time. The motions, Mr. Donavich, Mr. Morgan, your motion still stays. So with that, I'm just going to proceed with the vote unless council has anything further. I'm going to go to the audience. Audience have any communication regarding this matter, sir? Make your way to the podium. Name and address?
Hunter Anderson, 15470. I can just say, on behalf of the community in and around Hidden Lane, we are grateful for the New Oakland Family Centers' pulling this proposal. While we are fully aware of all the work they have done for mental health, we believe that there were too many concerns raised about this issue. However, this does not detract from the fact that we, as a community in the City of Livonia, do still want to address the issue of mental health, and on behalf of the City of Livonia Youth Commission, we will be reaching out to New Oakland Family Centers in order to tackle this conflict, or tackle this problem together as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, young man.
Anything further from the audience?
Call for the vote.
Yes, we're going to go right to the vote. We all learned something new today, new terms, from my colleague, Mr. Jolly. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote? On the denial, which means a yes vote is a denying vote, correct?
Exactly. Yes. Councilmember Toy.
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Morgan.
You can't abstain.
Can't abstain?
You cannot abstain.
Then, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the denial passes seven to zero. From now, we are going to move on to new business, which is item number 15. It's a request for designation as a nonprofit organization. This comes to us from the GH Pastor Foundation for Kids. This is required by the State of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow a raffle fundraiser in the future.
So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to step aside for a brief moment to avoid the appearance of impropriety due to my legal dealings with this gentleman. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that. Name and address for the record.
Sometimes we're sorry to hear that, too. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, Brandon Grisco, partner of the law firm of Fosona and Grisco, 41700 Six Mile Road. Here is an attorney representing GH Pastor Foundation for Kids, and I just want to say good evening to the council, clerk, city attorney, and the mayor. It's always a pleasure to be here. So I, I know, President McCullough, that you're familiar with the organization, but just for council's edification, I think this is something that comes up fairly regularly. In order to conduct like a 50-50 raffle at a charity event, a nonprofit organization has to obtain a raffle license from the State of Michigan, and so in order to do that, you have to qualify through the state, and one of the steps to go through is to go to the local governing body where your organization exists and request that they recognize you as a nonprofit organization. So I think in the council packet, you've got the GH Pastor Foundation for Kids, you've got the IRS tax exemption recognition, as well as our charitable solicitation registration through the State of Michigan, and we're looking to do charity hockey events to fundraise for kids, so...
I appreciate you coming up. I just wish Mr. Neville would have come up with you, but that's okay, I'm going to save him from it.
I had to talk him out of it, actually. I can't trust him to speak publicly.
That's fine. I, I don't blame you. Counsel, we have a motion from Toy, I think support from Morgan. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Toy.
The pastor family have been doing all kinds of stuff in this community, very charitable family, and just tell John and others, we appreciate everything he does, so, you know, didn't have a problem putting forth a motion for him.
Anything further from council?
Absolutely.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none, madam clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. We're going to move on to item number 16, which is a request to approve a revised agreement with Livonia Public Schools for the collection of school taxes by the City of Livonia. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor and Treasurer for a period of four years at a rate of $5 per parcel billed.
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving motion.
Support. So approving from Jolly, support from Mr. Donavich. The mayor, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council, and thank you for taking this item up. I have with me our city treasurer as well, but I'll be presenting on behalf of both offices this evening. As you are all aware, we entered into an agreement with Livonia Public Schools back in August of 1994 to collect their taxes. What is now a 30-year-old agreement has sufficed us for a long time and appears to perhaps have worked, but at one point in time, the rates have gotten a little bit higher than Livonia Public Schools has wanted to pay. So a couple of years back, they approached the city council and they approached the mayor's office about adjusting the contract. There wasn't much of an appetite for it at the time. We bring in $472,000 a year collecting Livonia Public Schools taxes, but earlier this year, when this issue came up a second time, the council prior to you put this item in committee to begin to study whether or not what we were engaged in in a current contract really reflected the work that was being done. And came to an understanding that perhaps some, it was time for us to revise that contract and to revisit it. So what you have before you tonight is an agreement that we are proposing that we enter into with Livonia Public Schools that charges them based on a per parcel tax. So it's $5 per parcel, as opposed to charging them a flat-rate fee that then got a increase based on our 192 contract increases. So what this does is it charges them per parcel. The contract that we're proposing allows us to retain 100% of the interest that's earned. The money that we collect sits in an account for a number of days, collects it sometimes, given the market, a considerable amount of interest. This would allow us to retain that interest for a year at 100%, and then thereafter to retain the interest at 50%. The other piece of the contract that is an interesting change is that it gives us an opportunity to renegotiate this contract every four years with Livonia Public Schools, and we think that's ultimately fair. There are dynamics that change, there are dynamics of cost for us to, to collect this fee that may, may change over time. There may be other issues that change, but it allows us to all come back to the table and to talk about this. So we have before you what we think is a fair agreement between us and Livonia Public Schools. It's a new way of looking at how we charge for the collection of taxes. So it is before you now, for your consideration. This would go into effect with the next tax bill, so it goes into effect pretty much immediately. There would be some cost savings to Livonia Public Schools in their next budget year. There would be a, a little bit of a loss for us in this budget cycle, but one that we're sure that retaining that interest will cover.
Thank you, mayor. Counsel? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to address before the vote that I do work for Livonia Public Schools. I am a Churchill teacher, but however, I do not have any pecuniary gain at all, regardless of how this vote goes, so I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, because some people have asked me about that. I did check with our city attorney, so it is fine for me to stay on the vote for this. Also, I just wanted to say, I agree, the agreement we had with Livonia Public Schools was really dated and in some need of revision. While the City of Livonia and Livonia Public Schools are totally different entities and they run separately, we do need to work together for our residents, and so I do think this is a good deal. I would say that maintaining our good, quality school district is what attracts people oftentimes to our city, helps maintain our property values, and brings our young families to our city. So, all that being said, we know LPS is a good community partner, and I'm glad we were able to come to a great agreement with this. I want to commend the administration. I was in a lot of meetings with our mayor regarding this, and we, I, this is about a best deal I think we could have come up with, and I really commend you for that, so I appreciate that. I'm going to definitely be in agreement.
Thanks, Vice President. Anything else from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, mayor. Great job seeing your team for negotiating this deal, and hats off to the LPS staff. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that LPS, they have their own board meeting tonight, so I'm sure if they didn't have a board meeting tonight, they'd all be here. Like one of our committee meetings, I think the entire administration and their whole board showed up. I just wanted to also say, good job to former councilman and finance committee chair, Mr. Scott Moore, Mr. Scott Barr. He was the finance, the chair of the finance committee and really provided a lot of information to council on the history of this, in addition to what the mayor's office gave us, but Mr. Barr gave us a lot of great information, and it's nice to see that this issue that's been going on for quite a long time now is finally going to get, taken a look at tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Anything else from council?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just before you go to your vote, I want to thank you all. Each of you spent a considerable amount of time looking at various iterations of this agreement with me and with the staff, and had you not invested so much time in doing that and really understanding what we were looking at, you know, all of the elements, all of the parts of it, I don't know that we would be where we are today. Your input was invaluable. I look at this very much as a team effort and truly appreciate everything that you brought to the table.
Thank you, mayor. Nothing else from council? I'm going to go to the audience. Is there any audience communication regarding this matter? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, mayor. With that, we're going to move on to item number 17, which is an acceptance of donations. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for cash and gifts from various contributors to be used for purposes designated by donors. Mr. Davis from Parks and Recreation, how are you?
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving.
Oh, yes.
Normally, I would be quiet at this point, but I do want to thank all of our donors, specifically, just highlighting a couple of our larger donors, Hardy's Family Trust for Shakespeare in the Park, Livonia Community Foundation for their grant, Trinity Elite supporting 100 Days to Health, Masco Corporation, and of course, we had David Sharp, I did not know of this one, $10,000 for the Newburgh School Accessible Entrance. So a large number of donors, large and small, but I do want to highlight those large donors and thank them. Thank everyone.
Mr. Jolly?[1726.23] Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. This is, this is one of those purely happy moments at council, when we get to thank people for their contributions to our community. And, you know, there is a certain aspect of this list here where there are small donations. I'm looking at one for $27.13, and there are large donations, looking at one for $5,000. On this list is the who's who of Livonia community, but also the unsung heroes.
Yes.
So we want to thank them all, and we appreciate all the efforts to make our community great. Thank you.
Anything else from counsel? Seeing none. Anybody else from the audience wants to speak on some donations? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Which would be really weird if we said no to any donations, but...
It would be, but thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on to number 18, which is acceptance of a quick claim deed. This comes to us from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from Leo Sauve as part of a lot combination of partial numbers 46-125-99-0004-000 and 46-125-99-0010-006 in order to obtain the necessary road right-of-way in the northeast section of 32. Who is going to be giving background on this?
So moved.
Second.
I got a move from Toy, second from Jolly.
Mr. President, I don't think we need any background information on this. This is a housekeeping matter that goes along with doing business, and this is what the city and the administration should be doing, negotiating these things without the city paying any money, so that we can maintain the necessary functions of the property.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Do we have any comments from counsel on this? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. The motion passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to item number 19, which is a request to schedule a closed committee of a whole meeting. This comes to us from the Department of Law for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privilege communication with respect to the Donna and Deana Krosky versus the City of Livonia. Counsel.
Move to approve.
Support. Motion from Jolly, support from Donavich. Any discussion? Seeing none. Audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Taschnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. The motion carries seven to zero. That brings us, that concludes the regular agenda. Is there any audience communication for items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Going back to counsel? Seeing none?
Mr. President, real quick.
Yes.
We have two retirees from the City of Livonia to recognize this evening. In February of 2024, Randy Abramson, a senior building inspector, retired after 24 years and five months of service, and Donna Winter, an assistant branch librarian, retired after 32 years and nine months of service. So we, as a city and a council, want to wish them well on their happy and healthy retirements and thank them for their years of service to our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Anything else from counsel? Seeing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Toy, support?
Support.
From Vice President. I can safely show seven. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:13, and we will start the study meeting at 8:23. Thank you.